All right. Okay, I'm gonna call and screen the order, please. Hey, this is the Board of Selectmen meeting for Thursday, August 24th. Time is seven o'clock. All three selectmen are present. Secretary is present. Administrator is present. Any recording, Mert? Everything we're all set?
All set.
And going, right?
You ready for your close-up?
Okay. Which side, tell me which side?
Face the window.
Okay, uh, let's go first on the agenda. We have the old business first. We have some minutes to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the August 10th regular meeting minutes. And I'll second the motion.
Any discussion on those minutes? I thought they were pretty good.
Nice job, Mike Knowles.
Lean, help me do. She called it coming from the station.
All in favor of the approval?
Aye.
Let's pass it off to Senator.
I'll make a motion, uh, for the non-public meetings that are meeting minutes that are not gonna be sealed. Except the minutes written. From August 10th.
I will second them. Any discussion on those? They were, they were not, they're not being sealed because, um, there were no names mentioned. We kept everything generic in there, so I think there's no need to seal them.
Is that the, uh, nine o'clock? Nine p.m., yeah.
Well, you understand that everything went well as far as the action, action items, so that?
Yes.
Super. Thank you for coming in on Saturday. And I, I understand Lean sent a certified letter, so at least have...
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the 9:31 p.m. sealed non-public meeting minutes for August 10th. And I'll second that.
Any discussion on those minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
We have to do two seconds. Yes, ma'am. These are ones for 9:31. Block, second.
The Scotch tape certainly.
Excellent. Now, seal them. Excellent. Sorry, we'll send it back this way, we'll start doing the sealing.
Was the motion moving last meeting, the C.O.B.?
Yes.
Okay.
We just approved it, sorry, we just approved it. As written. We're putting to work.
Thank you, Dean.
Yep. All right, all right. Now, I'm gonna open up the Amin to public comment. If you do have something to say for public comment, I would ask you just please state your name for the record. And if you want to, you can come up closer, that way we can get you on tape if you wanna, if you're too soft. I'll start over here with Mert, no? Lee?
Patrick Bound. Um, I have a couple of things for the selectmen. One, a bit of quote that I'll give you guys tonight for a broken window at the transfer.
Excellent.
And then I have two other dumpsters, I'm, two more dumpsters we're getting ready to haul to the scrapyard. But I also have a residence who's interested in purchasing them from us. And basically, I roughly figured out what we're gonna get scrap price-wise and wise, and they're willing to pay that, so... I didn't know if it's okay to sell them to them, or...
Are they in current use?
No. No, they're ones that we replaced.
Okay.
They're either, they're either gonna go...
Scrap metal.
Yeah, for scrap metal or be sold and resident approached me and said, "Hey, I'd like a couple of dumpsters." We talked on it.
What's a scrap metal per ton now?
For them, it's gonna be roughly a hundred and fifty. Now, still delivering them to Northwood.
How much do they weigh?
The last ones that I delivered that are similar to them, um, I looked at the slip today, they're about eighty-eight, hundred pounds apiece. So, I figure it's gonna be roughly, some ways in the ballpark of like six hundred bucks.
So, you just wanna make sure that we come up a few dollars ahead of scrap?
Yeah.
And in fact, we don't have to transfer them?
Right, it would be, we just have to drop them here in town as opposed to driving to Northwood, dropping them, bringing them back, you know, coming back, picking up another one, going to Northwood, and coming back.
I missed it, these windows, the old windows?
No, no, these are, um, old, old, um...
He has a quote for a replacement window.
Yeah, I got that.
And then he's got dumpsters that he's trying to, um, I don't know, I don't know, give her any discussion?
We're gonna go with your discretion. I, I, I think we're in consensus that your discretion will honor it and, uh, will respect it. And so I think you have more knowledge of it than we do.
I'll get together with Lean on the actual procedure and all that.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure it was okay to do that.
Bill of sale and all that kinda stuff, as is.
Yeah, right.
As is, as seen.
Okay.
Yeah. The, um, we might have some money to replace this floor then after.
We're gonna put it, hopefully reinvest it right in the, in the...
Actually, that, that money ends up going back into, um, general fund.
Capital improvements.
Capital improvements, yeah, okay.
That's a good question.
That's all good. Anything else, anything else, sir?
I, I got some public comment about this.
Oh, go ahead, just the same thing.
Since you're selling, what appears to be selling town property, shouldn't everybody in the town be awares? Because maybe there's somebody else who might want it.
You may wanna post it, you know, right? Might wanna, you know, is that, it won't interfere with you selling it, right? If no one else bids on it.
If we post it for a week or so, so the public knows.
Yeah, just, I, I think it's probably, that's even a wider, yeah, I, I expect that's what I hear.
It's bottom of a tax dollar, isn't it?
Post it on the site for a week and then...
So, I guess it would have to be worded that it's a sealed quote or something, I don't know, best or...
No, except I think best offers.
Yeah.
Well, you probably were wanting to open in a slot.
Yeah, at the next selectman meeting. Seal, okay. We'll get rid of it somewhere. So, hold off and set the price until we get these bids in.
Okay.
And we'll still talk about it?
Okay.
So, we can set something up?
Yeah. Yes. All right, that was good comment, thank you.
Just one in here.
Well, we may get more money out of it. Okay.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I heard from Lean, Fred Mullins.
Thank you, sir.
And, uh, from a selectman from Hopkinton, and I'm scheduled to meet with them September 10th at 9:30 in the morning to formulate the town line between Hopkinton and Dunbarton. And, uh, Dave Gole says he might have a comment, and same with Jeff Trexler from the school boards.
Excellent. Yeah, I did get your email, thanks, Fred. I, I did see an email also, so that's good.
Okay.
They responded. They're right town, correct?
Yes.
Weather permitting?
Low.
Okay.
Still weather gets together.
Okay. All right, anything else, sir?
We'll, we'll sit.
Okay. Rainy?
Um, I'm raining, well, I'm here to, um, be a part of a discussion of another item that I think is on my agenda.
So, you're on the schedule, yeah?
Same thing.
Okay.
Chris Rullard, same, literally.
Chief?
Yeah, Dan Sklud. I just wanted to mention that, um, our NBT project, um, we, we purchased everything, we're waiting for things to come in. The, uh, cost of the data plans was significantly less than what I had, had planned on, and some of the hardware was less, so we're gonna come in on, a little bit on the budget on this.
Oh, that's, uh, that's good news.
Well, the budget is always supposed to be...
Thank you. Anything for the group?
Um, I'm here for the voting.
Okay.
I just have one suggestion. You might wanna think about putting a minimum bid in for those dumpsters that would be equal to at least scrap price. That way, so somebody doesn't say, hey, you know, you worded that way, it has to be a minimum bid or something.
Right, starting bid.
Yeah, or whatever, minimum bid is typically the term they use. So, so somebody doesn't say, hey, I might be able to get up to 250, they might be the only person.
And everyone wasting their time, okay? So, why don't we do that, get the scrap equivalent, and deliver and figure what you, the delivery might be? I think that's a good idea, thank you. This continues, I tell you, it's just, I thought it was gonna be simple.
Well, when you do stuff like that.
Yeah. Well, it keeps those, you don't get frivolous bids either.
Exactly. Otherwise, you're gonna have tons of bids that don't pay no...
We'll be opening up our...
Reserve bid, what?
Yeah. Like an eBay reserve, starting bid. Okay, I'm gonna close public comment, I'm gonna take it back to the, um, the agenda. Chris, why don't you come on up? I'm gonna discuss his, uh, post-delivering movements, we all had an opportunity to see it. I thought it was well-written.
Thank you.
Your parentheses are on the dollars, the fines.
Right.
And, uh, I thought it might be good for the review to see, review with us again how that fines would work, and especially court costs, what could come back to Dunbarton?
Sure.
And what latitude do you give the police officer in assessing the, the fine? And those three items, I think is the best.
So, uh, statutorily, um, I found that ordinances in and of themselves can be assessed up to $1,000, um, which is the same as violation level offenses here in New Hampshire. So, I, you know, I use 750 as kind of a ballpark for larger items, vehicle parts and accessories, um, furniture, some of the bigger things that require, you know, Jeff Crosby, Woody and his crew to have to come out and actually remove these items. You know, the thousand-dollar fine, if, if we wanted to assess that for, for large items, um, we could certainly do that. Um, the court, in its discretion, always can suspend all or part of a fine.
So, if it's a ridiculous fine, they're gonna use it?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, with a, a minimum mandatory imprint in the ordinance, I think we wouldn't have a hard time getting that money, um, if, if we, we explain to our prosecutors.
So, you have a 750 max, pretty much, right?
Um, I just kinda put that in there as just kind of a, kind of a starting point.
It's labeled as a minimum, that should be maximum though, right? 750 max, 250 minimum?
Well, what I did is I, I wanted to still give some discretion to our, our officers, so the 250 I have in there, that could be for, for small items, food wrappers, bottles, cans, stuff like that. Um, I mean, you kinda have a, a large range of things that obviously get litter deposited, dumped, stuff like that, so... I didn't feel that, in the interest of the ordinance, it made a lot of sense for us, you know? You throw a beer can, 750 bucks, you dump a couch, 750 bucks, so, I mean, we can kinda have a, you know, a higher fine amount for larger items, in the opinion of, you know, the officer investigating.
So, that is a minimum of 750?
Yeah, yeah, just kind of a, just kind of a ballpark.
All right, I didn't know if there was a max in the minimum, but it's not as...
No, no, so I, I just wanted to, I want our officers to have recourse if, if they catch somebody depositing something relatively small.
Yep.
Um, because the, the two state laws, there's a legal dumping state law that's a misdemeanor, that's up to 1,200, so that's kind of in line with like the 750 figure I came up with. And then under the motor vehicle code, there's a much smaller fine of 62 dollars, like if someone throws a cigarette butt, or like, you know, a food wrapper out of their car. So, that kind of comes in line with the 250. So, I was just kinda trying to work off the state laws, so the fines aren't so out there that the court's gonna look at them and be like, you know, this, this isn't reasonable, we're gonna suspend the entire fine. They don't have to pay anything, um, because that wouldn't really make any sense.
No.
But the other thing you'll see in there is a, a reimbursable expenses section. Um, I felt it was prudent to put that in there for the board's consideration, because if the road agent, or the high, uh, uh, highway department staff, or transfer station personnel have to come out, that's taking time out of their day, their resources, um, you know, there's obviously costs associated with disposing of these items, so... If we did catch somebody doing this in the act, we would just need something on paper from one of those town departments, we would submit it to our prosecutor, and then we would seek reimbursement back to that, um, department, um, through the court process.
Yep.
And any fine assessed from this ordinance would come back to the town's general fund.
And I can just see like tires, tires are a real, uh, expensive item to eliminate.
Yep.
And then does a cost incurred in that, right? And so that would be passed on to the offender?
Yep. And, and generally what we see is, you know, we don't usually see one tire, usually it's three or four.
Or a bunch.
Or a bunch of tires. And of course, this ordinance is, is based around us actually catching people in the act. Unfortunately, it is a pretty rare thing, however, I think some signage with a high dollar amount, you know, littering, you know, fine up to whatever we decide on, hopefully that'll act as a deterrents.
Especially around Kimball Pond.
Absolutely, yeah, these rec areas get hit all the time, unfortunately, so...
Now, as I understand the procedure from here, is we're gonna recommend approval, but it's gotta be drafted as a warrant to the voters. Is that correct?
I believe so. Ordinances have to go through the legislative body, right?
I, I had seen something recently, and I wanted to ask you, the town of Bosclund...
Yeah.
Passed a similar parks ordinance to what we have, and they just had a public hearing at a, a regular board meeting.
All right, I'll check with NHMA.
Well, we'll follow up on the, uh, the procedures.
Yeah, 'cause I, I don't think we have to go necessarily to town meeting.
It has been a public hearing.
I think that's how Nelson did it, right? They even public hearings.
I, I think it was a public hearing.
I think it already was.
Or something before the board that the board decided on.
So, we're gonna wanna do it for all these that you're developing now?
There are three of them.
There's three of them.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Okay.
But I just, I mean, I could be wrong, but I think in the interest of saving time and going, waiting until town meeting, if it's something we can do with a public hearing, that would be great.
We will, we will follow, we'll get the answer.
Okay. Um, the other thing I put in here, um, you'll see under the, uh, the fine section, I put in hypothermic needles, um, and methamphetamine-related manufacturing materials, which we have come across before. And unfortunately, we're, we're still finding needles, um, all over town, and it's, it's a huge public safety hazard, um, not only to the people that find it and call us, but also us. I mean, we have special gloves and containers and, and things of that nature, but it's, it's not sanitary, obviously handling a used needle, and, and we want people to call us, because, you know, people will throw them in the trash, and then Woody and his staff will find them, you know? And I just think some type of, uh, again, going along with the deterrents factor of, you know, people are gonna throw needles, maybe they'll think twice if there's a...
No, I was glad to see that in there, 'cause we just actually had some a few weeks earlier on your report, so...
Yep.
It seems to be a, a regular occurrence on the website, on your blog.
I did, um, speak with the conservation commission and told them when you had that drafted, I would forward it to them for their review.
Great, absolutely.
So, at their next meeting, I told them I'd at least present that to them and see if they wanted to add anything or thinking it was out of line, but they were happy that we were doing it.
Good.
And then if, if it's a public hearing, that will simplify things.
Yeah, that will.
Okay, give that to Lean, we need copy sent to conservation.
Conservation, yeah?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Continue to work with you, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job writing it.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Can I just come with me?
Let's read off the show, we can have discussion.
She needs bodyguards.
I invited the other, some of the other election officials to come as well.
Can they just make sure to have you state your name for the record, please?
I've signed it, yes.
Okay, test, uh, testify.
Thank you so much for...
For writing comments on this agenda item is, uh, gotta give you good on your names.
Yes, Linda Landry, town clerk.
Rainy Roulette, town moderator.
Eric Casey, supervisor of the checklist.
Fred Mullins, citizen.
That's moderate.
How do you spell your last name? Janeet. How do you spell your last name?
Your last name?
So, I see C.A.S.E.D. Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I understand from viewing the YouTube videos that the board voted to open the polls an hour earlier than we normally do. Um, I did not have the opportunity to view the previous YouTube videos to see what led up to it. It's my understanding that it's mostly have to do with people who have to go to work in the morning, is that about the gist of it?
Yeah, if you're here at five after seven, you're turning away a lot of cars. So, just, just to make a mention, 'cause I am here at five after seven.
Okay, so what I wanted to, uh, bring to your attention that you may not be aware of is, this had been a problem in the past for people, and some years back, the legislature passed something that allowed folks who, uh, had to be out of town during their, during polling hours for something work-related, they were entitled to vote by absentee ballot. That qualifies them to apply for one, they have up until five o'clock the day before an election. Many times during an election, when I see people outside in line, um, and they're, and they're told, of course, the polls don't open until eight, I do try to let them know, you know, for the next election, you qualify for an absentee ballot if you're here this early because you have to go to work. So, there is a law that allows for that, and I'm not sure that you're aware of it. I do post that on the, uh, website as well, absentee ballots are available to qualified voters. Uh, the polling hours, as far as people coming early, I don't know what to tell you, our, our polling hours are well-posted in town, they're on the website, they're on warrant, they're, the TV stations usually have them listed.
And usually correctly.
And usually correctly. So, they are, they're well-posted, so perhaps the voters, perhaps we need to tell the voters to, you know, check, the polling hours have been the same since 1996. That's when, uh, we used to open the polls at 10 o'clock in the morning, and in 1994, 1996, we voted to, um, let me see. It was 94, it was on the warrant, on the, uh, the ballot, to start the polling hours at eight instead of 10, beginning with the 1996 general election. So, that's just a little history for you. Uh, and more history is that I went to the Secretary of State's website, put together just a few numbers, there are 317 polling places in New Hampshire. Of those 317, the, uh, hours we currently have for polling, which is eight to seven, 153 of them are open eight to seven.
Almost half.
Almost half. Um, what you're proposing is seven to seven, there are 72 towns that have seven to seven, uh, I'm sorry, seven, that's not what you're proposing, you're proposing eight to seven.
Seven to seven was seven, yeah.
Too tired, too tired. Uh, seven to eight, there are 11 towns, the balance of them varies, 30 of them open at six in the morning, that's mostly, uh, all the different wards, uh, Nashua, Manchester, and all of that. We don't by law have to be open until 11 o'clock in the morning, I'm not sure if you are aware of that, so I'm voting that you change your mind, and we don't open the polls till 11, not kidding.
Can I give you some statistics?
So, anyway, just a few statistics for you, and those numbers are all on the Secretary of State's website.
22% of New Hampshire residents work out of state. Some of them in construction and other businesses where they could actually be back in town if it rained or whatever, and then somebody says, "I saw him over by the park." So, does he qualify for an absentee ballot having used one?
He needs it, what do you think, and that's a very moderate, I mean, he, he filled out this form with the intent of not being in town.
I, I will say, I've been approached by a number, a number that work at Elliott at Rivers Edge that live in town...
Right.
That don't get out till six o'clock, could be back in town, possibly, if things work right at the end of their day, then there's no way of judging that. And having seen and having turned away so many people over those towns, my proposal was to do this, if the town doesn't like it at, at a town meeting, they can reverse that. But I'd like to try it and see, we brag about how many people turn out at our elections, and are we excluding people?
As I said, I'm, I think that they have the opportunity to vote absentee, and if they, they apply with the best intentions of complying, then they qualify. From a hardship standpoint, or for much, we'll start with a monetary standpoint, you're adding an extra hour for every poll worker who gets paid. So, now you're adding extra money for every election, sometimes four elections a year, uh, and that all adds up to our budget. So, there's, there's money to consider. Uh, and then the other thing is getting volunteers or even people to work the polls, not necessarily volunteers. It's hard enough to find people who, the polls may open at eight, but remember, everybody's here earlier than that, we have to be here, they have to be here to get ready. So, it's hard to find not only people who are available to come in and work the polls, but people who are also available to attend the training. Because with the magnifying glass that all the polling areas across this country are under, especially the henshark, you know, we, we need to make sure that all of our workers are trained. It's hard to find people that have that kind of time to come in. So, there's just so many other things to think about on that. From a personal standpoint, is that the weekend before an election, I'm generally in here doing stuff. The day before an election, my office opens at 7:30, it's a regular workday, so all the election stuff that I do is above and beyond people who wanna license their dog, or register a car, or get a marriage license. I can't close until five o'clock, and that's by state law on that day, I have to be here till five o'clock to accept absentee ballots that are delivered, or absentee ballots that are being applied for. So, now I'm already here from 7:30 in the morning till five. At five, that's when the gavel drops, no more absentee ballots, now I have to generate a report of all the absentee ballots that have been issued, and I have to reconcile to make sure everyone I've issued matches my report. So, now it's getting later and later, so I pack up stuff to bring home, meanwhile, I'm still checking email from home, maybe I'm three-hole punching the checklist to put in the binders. I don't sleep well that night because it's just, it's everything all at once. The next morning, I come here at seven to pick up the ballots that have to be secured, the sealing tape, the, you know, the red tape, all the labels, to get that and get to the polling place for 7:30 to make sure i's are dotted, t's are crossed, and then the polls open. That's a, a regular election, many times I don't get home until after midnight. The times we have town meeting on top of that, tack it on four or five more hours, it's about a 20-hour day for some of us. That's a really long day, and when we report our results, we have to be as sharp as we can, and that extra hour can really make a huge difference in our accuracy level, given the amount of time. So, I'm, I'm really hoping that the board will reconsider and suggested people to apply for absentee ballots. The law, I mean, it was so great when they changed that, because before, you really had to be absolutely out of town for that 24-hour period. You don't have to anymore, they've made it so much easier for people to get them.
So, on the absentee ballot, if you're in town but working a long day, can you get one then?
You have until five o'clock the day before to apply for it, is that what you're asking?
No. When you apply for it, you have to come in and get, get a copy of it?
Correct.
From you?
Right.
Okay, and then, so you have to have the time for that, but if you're working in-state, not out-of-state, but you're working a long day during polling hours, can you get an absentee ballot then?
You certainly can, you have up until...
So, you're in-state, but you're working a long hours. In town, not out-of-state.
Out of town, you could be just, you can be working in Boe but have, or in Concord, be a 12-hour shift nurse or, or doctor, and you're gone during that time, you qualify. And you don't even have to come in to get it, here's the beauty of it, you can, the, the form to apply is always posted on the website when I put it up there. People can download this form, fill it out, and scan it back to me, and I'll pop that ballot in the mail, they don't even have to come to my office.
Wouldn't that long ago into effect?
I don't re, I don't remember the date.
Yes, maybe it's a 10 years ago, they're changing.
I was thinking more like seven years, but...
Because we only heard about the, you know, like we had the pending snowstorm, and I overheard you tell someone in your office that they could get an absentee ballot. And that's when I had just gotten a call from someone saying they weren't gonna, I said, "I'll see you tomorrow, you're going to vote," right? And she said, "No, not with that weather, that's so you can come in today and get your absentee ballot," 'cause I heard you over. But I hadn't, I've never seen it posted, I'm...
But it depends, if, if you, if they wanna come in just to get one in that instance, just 'cause they don't feel like driving in the snow, that does not qualify them. There are specific reasons to, there are specific instances where you can get one, uh, and unfortunately, bad weather's not one of them. But if you have a disability, you're, uh, you can get one if you have a, a religion... If you have a religious observance that keeps you from the polls, you can get one. There are very specific reasons. But being out of town, not out-of-state, but out of town during polling hours qualifies you. And like I said, you can scan it to me, fax it to me. Nobody needs to come into the office for it if you qualify.
Bob, about your concern about someone getting an absentee ballot and then all of a sudden they're in town. We actually had that happen in the last election. Where one, one person, one of our residents came and tried to vote, e- even though they had already voted absentee. They forgot. And I, I think that was an honest mistake. But we talked it over. And I thought we had a clear idea of what should happen. But I called the Secretary of State anyway. And, and it confirmed our, our initial thought, which was, they had already filled out a ballot when they did the absentee ballot. That's the one that counts. Just don't let her vote again. And, and there was nothing about, well, we, you can't take the absentee ballot because they're in town. No, it's, that's the one that counted.
Well, I will say, the day after the election, and when I went to the transfer station, a lot of people mentioned that they were glad that the hours would change. When we, at the transfer station, one guy, I know the face, but you know, you can't place the name, tapped me on the shoulder and said, "When are we coming into the twenty-first century?" Saturday at Old Home Day, I had a number of people stop by and say, it was kind of, we talked about it. They were kind of glad we were opening early. So I mean, I have a real hard time. I've been in the construction industry where I've had to rush to get back to vote. So it, it's probably not well-publicized, probably well-not-talked-about until it happens. And I think I'd like to see this stand till they overturn it in town meeting.
Or it comes to a point where you have one person coming for that out?
Yeah, well, actually, yeah.
I'd like to go down to it and make an early guess.
I'll, I'll, I'll jump in. I have a couple of thoughts, and I'll try not to repeat things that Linda said, though I think she raised some good points. One is, I think that it's important, when you've got a whole, when you're trying to organize a whole community around an event like an election, I think it's really important to stay consistent. I, I also believe strongly in experimenting with ideas in other parts of life. But on this one, I think if you've got everyone used, kind of used to come in at eight, and now it's seven, and then that didn't work out so well, so we're back to eight, I think that leads to more problems in the long run. So I think this decision, it'd be good to be very thoughtful about it and to see it as a long-term decision. That being said, there are four different kinds of elected officials that are present at an election with overlapping responsibilities that, that push us to have to work with each other. Ballot clerk, I gotta make sure that the ballot clerks are doing things right. Linda has to make sure they're there. You guys set the hours for the election, but paying for, for people to come and work the election comes out of her budget. It is these overlapping responsibilities. So I think it's really important to make sure that if you're gonna change things, you've got the other elected officials behind you so that they're gonna support the thing that, that you've decided. There are a lot of, all of those elected officials, but there are other people involved too, the ballot clerks and ballot counters in particular. It's a lot of people to try to mobilize. I share some concerns about extending the day. We're already having trouble having ballot clerks there for the whole time that we're trying to cover. And that was for a local election that didn't get a great turnout. There's, there's a lot of, a lot of things to consider. If you make this change, it's gonna have a big impact on, it's gonna have the biggest impact on Linda. It's gonna have a big impact on me as well. And there are parts we don't consider.
Just, can I just add something to that? Who said, there are three supervisors in the checklist, and the law requires at least two of them to be there during an election. So they, they, and the board selectmen, same thing, you have to have at least two. You guys have the luxury of saying, you know, "I'm gonna do a half a day or whatever." Rainey, I don't have that. We, we don't. We are yet. We're, I keep my office open to accommodate the public whenever possible on an election day so that we don't have to shut down car registrations because the polls are open. I'm asking you to consider that burden that it places specifically on the two election officials that have to be there before the sun comes up and are there long after the sun goes down. It's a really long day. And I just get really cranky the next day. You don't want me around here cranking.
I know you don't, I'm not supposed to speak, but the easy solution is to follow another part of that law and put it on the town warrant next March and let the town decide.
I just, the last thing I throw in is from the Secretary of State that the majority of towns are, have the hours that, that we have. And those, those towns are about our size. Many of the towns and cities that open earlier, they're the bigger cities in the state.
Anything else?
Yeah. What you said about, they said, "Bring us into the twenty-first century." The absentee ballot is the twenty-first century. And I think we could do more publicity on how you qualify.
I could do that.
I know a lot of people don't know that. And I didn't know that. I misunderstood it myself when I was working and never made use of it.
I could, yeah, I could certainly put that out there. I just have, I can't say about, "We've lured the water." You know, we already put things out there. But it's really up to people to, to look. It's like, I'm gonna go to the mall tomorrow. Jeez, did they open at nine or did they open at ten? Oh, I'm gonna take a chance and I'll go for nine. Oh darn, they don't open till ten. I should have looked. It's kind of the same thing.
Right. Yeah. My take on this is that when I was former moderator, I'd be there by seven o'clock, first to put the flag up. Then make sure the building's all set, the heat's on, the lights are on, and everything else. And also, like Ray says, make sure the ballot clerks are there on time and everything else. Now, you're expecting them to get there six, six-thirty in the morning instead of getting there from seven thirty, seven to seven thirty before the eight o'clock morning. Now, I worked in construction for thirty-nine years. I traveled every day out of Manchester. I'm, I'm by my own. And, you know, I always made provisions to come back to vote. I never missed a vote in my life. And the thing is that I think the line of people waiting outside is kind of relative to population. If you look at Manchester, they open at six. And sometimes there's over two hundred people waiting outside to get there at six. So if you start from going from eight to seven, well, why don't you just, why didn't you just kind of start at six? Because the majority of people start at eight to nine o'clock to go to work. So I don't think seven o'clock's gonna really affect them at all as far as getting there in time. You know? And another thing that Rainey didn't mention is that once all the ballots or tablet and everything else, you're gonna make your run to state police headquarters to bring the results. So you get at least another hour over there. You know, and so I don't think myself that the logistics were really looked into this quite a bit. And just a matter, I understand people like to get there early, but I don't think seven o'clock's gonna work because they're gonna say, hey, why don't you open at six? Because I gotta go to work in Manchester for eight. Or I could still lose the, you know, that's my, my take on that.
Yeah, I think in the larger election, I think Bob had said that there were ninety-three people in line waiting there. I think that there might be ninety-three people at seven AM now and not at eight AM. I think you might be right on that part. I think it might just move the people that come early. You know, so a lot of people like to come early and be the first ones in the door to vote.
I don't think all those ninety-three do know what the hours were. They meant to be there. They're okay with drinking their coffee, talking to their friends, do your thing.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm completely with you that I, I want the best turnout that we can possibly have. So, so that, Bob, the thing you were saying earlier about, that's the goal of this. I'm with you on the goal. My, my two cents would be, maybe we try some other things to try to make it more possible for people who will be out of town, who won't be here at the right times. Publicize how it works to get an absentee ballot. Make sure people understand that as best they can. I would, I would support that.
I will say, there are long days, and most of the time you're standing for those days. Like you say, we can get, we can take a break. I run out, do some work, and we could go back home and come back. But the people that have to be there, they are long days. I will, you know? And I'm sure your days are much longer than the day we...
You haven't seen a big one yet.
Right, you guys have just...
I don't know if I want to.
That's for you, Bob, excuse me. I already gave the other two a selectmen a copy. So those are what qualifies you for an absentee ballot. But I like the idea of publicizing how it's used and promoting it. I do think that would solve, I mean, you know specifically the people who are interested, Bob, so those would be the ones I would start with. And that's really great because you don't even have to come in. You don't have to come to the town office. You don't have to go to the polling area if you qualify. That's the best of the worlds.
And I guess, you know, at, two weeks ago, that, that meeting, when Bob brought up, again, at the end of our business, we talk about general ideas of selectmen, haven't we? Once we're done with the public, we bring it back. That idea had come up a few other times with Bob. And I said, "Bob, instead of bringing it up, if you want to do something, let, make a motion, and you know, we'll, we'll go with the motion." So maybe there were some additional thoughts now that you guys come in front of us that we should have thought about. But that was the thought process that went through that, Bob, was bringing up the subject that he was concerned with. And I thought, let's just put a motion to it and...
Yeah, because evidently, it's not widespread out there that it's known. I mean, like I said, I, I'm an early bird. Sometimes I'm here before seven. And there's people coming down. Yeah, there might be people that it would be convenient during the day, but when you look at some of them, you know that a lot of them are traveling. They don't realize it.
And a lot of hot topics I do put, I sometimes I even put it as a heading. Absentee ballots are available to qualified voters. See attached application. So it just takes opening it up and reading it. And it's a lot of words because it's that type of form. It's a lot of reading.
When you say, "Read the inside," most people are gonna do just like they do with their bank statements. They have information. They toss it, you know, they're not gonna look, so...
They have to apply for it, email it, which is fine. You can accept it by email. But then it's gonna be mailed out to them. It can't be sent email, public ballots. And it's gonna be mailed back or dropped off.
Right.
And then it doesn't really reduce your work at all because you've gotta stay late that night and tell ya. So your work is either, is either...
I thought they just said she could, they could print that and then scan it back to her.
Well, just the application.
The application.
They can do, send the application.
And then the ballot's gotta go out.
But I mean, but still, I...
It's, it's still work to be done. Whether you do it at, at the day of polling or you're doing...
But it makes a difference in an hour at a polling area as opposed to sitting here with everything closed up and locked up and no interruptions after five o'clock, and I can focus as opposed to a polling hour. I, I, I will tell you that that extra hour will be an absolute hardship on at least the two of us. We don't have somebody that could just come in and take over with the knowledge that we have. And, you know, we get inspections with the Attorney General. We have so much to juggle in that period. And I also want to add while I'm at it, I so appreciate the willingness of the board to come and help set up. That's tremendous. And to help at night when we're all dragging feet getting back here. It's been a real godsend.
We only did that because of the small election.
Well, I know, but you, you have no idea. Many nights that I, I left that polling area and the stuff just been, yeah, you guys have been great about how...
I'll second what you're saying about you guys.
It's been a godsend.
Twenty years and, you know, this is the first board I see that's full of the willingness to help, help and help.
And we saw, we saw the outcome of that. The last couple of elections, they went smoothly. We, you know, we all went home confident about how things had gone during the day and that we had the right numbers at the end of the day. To me, that's, that's the example of when all four of the elected official groups are working well together. It's also, I'd say, I appreciate having this conversation for the same reason. The, the election day goes well when we are all working well together. And this kind of thing helps. I didn't, I don't see, I don't have any problem with the idea that you guys talked about it and, and are, are looking to find ways to respond to people and try to help them be able to vote. I don't have anything wrong with that at all. But in the end, we gotta find a way to work together to make it work as smoothly as it can.
But at the same time, we're trying to address residents' concerns that come to us. The same, that's what, that's what prompted, that's what prompted this originally is the fact that there's a number of people, you know? And there's a number that I talked to Saturday afternoon when they found out that their voting hours were extended, that we're kind of happy now. Some of them probably are available. I can say that, you know? And some of them, it has been problematic, you know?
And I, I guess in the future, since, and you guys are new, and that's why they're, they're so great that they're so helpful because they're new and they're like so willing. But maybe if something election-related does come up, certainly I'm available to you guys anytime you have questions or, or looking for a solution to exactly what was brought to you. Because had you come to me, I would have pulled out one of those forms and just said, "Tell them next time, this is all they need to do." Because that's, it's just so simple. And I know Rainey would answer...
It is not that simple, though. The thing is, it's not that simple. Vote absentee is you gotta, gotta make an application. You gotta wait in the mail for the voter to come in. You gotta hope the mail delivers that day because we don't always have a regular mailman in this, in this town. Because sometimes I don't see anybody drive by. And then, and then, then it's gotta be mailed back with the hope it's gonna make it there by... And the question I have to do is, how many, how many voters came in absentee after the fact?
After, I think we've had, what, two maybe? The whole time we've done this, came in the day after the election?
So that's potentially two disenfranchised voters because of the failure of the absentee ballot?
That, I've gotta, I've gotta challenge that line of thought a little bit. Democracy is work. I don't think we can make it like absolutely simple and easy for everyone. Whether you come in or vote absentee, it's gonna take some effort.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And if, if you've, if you do a little foresight on the absentee ballot, I don't think it's an onerous process.
But the thing is, I go back to your logic, Rainey. And the thing is, I respect your logic. But if I respect, you know, consistency, well, why did we change it back in, from ten o'clock or eleven o'clock in the morning to eight o'clock? Why do we have voter ID? Why, why do we have voter ID? You want consistency. Well, we don't want voter, but it's empowered by the state upon us. But the thing is, sometimes change is good. And I, I looked at this when, when I listened to Bob's plea to, on, on two occasions in this meeting, to do something. And Dave said, "Well, let's push this forward. If you want to do it, let's make the change." And I was, in our, in the discussion, I said, "Well, let's see how it works." And the thing is, I mean, if we have no one, then it's a complete waste of time. But from Bob's reaction, from people coming up to him and thanking him, I mean, that's, that's powerful. I mean, just the disenfranchised, two voters. I mean, we've got two voters who've been disenfranchised.
But the two voters who were disenfranchised, I, I will tell them, I could probably go back and take a look, had been sent their absentee ballots the day the ballots came in. And those two voters waited until the very last minute to send them back. So you know, you gotta put some responsibility on them.
And some personal responsibility's gotta go along with that. And I totally agree with that. But the thing is, I, from reports that Bob's been sharing with us, I, I'm pretty impressed with some of the comments he's been getting.
Well, if, if you choose to stay with the decision you made, that, that's your prerogative. I'm gonna suggest that we find a time that the next training for ballot clerks happens, and I'm gonna ask all three of you to go. Because we can't find anybody.
I understood, I understood. And the thing is...
I actually, I'm attending the one in Govstown.
The thing is, what I, what I don't necessarily think we have to do is present this to the voters on a warrant. We could. And the thing is, I think, I, I know which, in fact, in my heart, I really feel I know which way it's gonna go.
If you want to open twenty-four-seven, absolutely, I'll vote for that.
And they'll go, they want it open at midnight like they do up in North Country.
Well, I was kind of thinking of that, you know, Dick's still...
Yeah, they're only open till one.
Yeah, those, those are five after.
Yeah, maybe nine to twelve, oh, five.
When they get, they get almost a hundred percent.
Wait, we could work with that.
That would be good. Say it for an hour.
So the thing is, absolutely, we are gonna work as a team on this. And there's, regardless of which way we go, we, we have to continue to work as a team. And the thing is, we have to be able to augment people when they're not there to be trained to help you guys so we can make it successful.
I think the, every time there's a training, I put it out there to the ballot clerks, to the supervisors. The supervisors go. The ballot clerks don't usually. I mean, and you can't force them to go. They, they really do need to go because they have to.
It's part, it's part of their responsibility.
I'd also like to add, this is the first time in a long time I've had such a wonderful board to work with during an election. Which you know where it's revolved. And it's not always gonna be the case. So something we're deciding now is really gonna put a burden on us when the makeup of the board changes. So please consider the future for us as well.
Are you foretelling my demise?
Nope, I'm just saying, you know, it's...
I wanna say one thing. I mean, you know, these, these two selectmen, we're fortunate, we have a couple of selectmen that are retired, so they have a little bit more time. I'm the working selectman of the group. So, you know, that, that little bit of extra time in the morning for me just to answer the phone, you know, a dozen times before I get there to try and make my day a little bit easier is helpful for me as well. And I'm not sure if the future selectmen will be working or non-working selectmen. But that, you know, I think that, you know, that part oughta come into play a little bit as well too because it's a little bit easier for you two having a, you know, you kinda open up your whole day where...
They'll have to put more money in the budget.
Yeah.
Exactly.
You know, I can put part of my day in and then part of it's gotta be, you know, on the phone too, so...
But we do, I hear you loud and clear. I think Bob is getting a different perspective and I respect that.
I know, I know that he wants to, to do so well for the people in town. I'm gonna throw one more thing out there. And I know former moderator and current moderator are gonna wanna hear it. But I'm gonna throw it out there. What might lessen our day, but will add to our budget is ballot counting machines. I know you guys don't wanna hear it, but...
Well, let me throw a little something there.
Okay.
That's the, that's like, look at the logistics. You've got it before every election. You have to have a certified technician test it out with the moderator before every election. You're gonna have someplace to store this thing. And you can't store it in that shed if there's the cold weather. And, you know, you're gonna have a place to plug it in.
I think I heard your dissertation on that before and I agree, I, I agree with you.
So there is a lot of cost involved with something like that.
Yes, no, it's not a free lunch.
I totally disagree with Linda.
The last recount that we were involved in involved not just our town, but another town as well. And our, our vote was much more accurate than theirs.
We are definitely more accurate.
I, I saw that.
Did they get out earlier?
I've, I've got a huge bias on that.
And so, I didn't even know, how much are those machines?
Oh, I'm sorry. They're, I think the four, five ones alone, just to buy, I think.
Four or five hundred for the machine?
Yeah, I think so.
Is there more? Oh, no, I'm going to the conference next month, I'll have to find out.
Well, send us your YouTube mission to find out some information on it. Okay, well, thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you very much.
One more thing I'd like to add is ninety-three in line was an extremely different presidential election.
Yeah, that was a big boy.
We've never seen that before.
There's usually...
It may never happen again.
There's, there's not usually ninety-three. There might be ten.
And those ninety-three people, they were great. They handled away, so...
Was that our, our last town meeting?
No, 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 that was the last...
That was the presidential election.
Presidential election. And for a lot of people, they probably wanted to be there. And, you know, and for a lot of people that came early and saw the cars coming in, they may have thought that things are gonna happen different because we had people standing outside at first. And people started, you started to pick up a bigger number around seven thirty, around quarter of eight. It was pretty little.
We brought it in a little after seven thirty.
It was cold.
Yeah, it was cold.
It was cold. All right. I know you have more stuff to get to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, I think, I think so. Okay, let's move on to agenda. I like this part, accepting money?
Well, you wanna move to the public hearing since we're a little bit behind?
Yes. Public hearing? We're going to reach seven thirty. We're a little bit late on this. But is there any member of the public who was here specifically for the public hearing on...
On money?
I'm all here for money.
We're accepting a, a major grant, highway grant.
Right here.
That's why Chief was here with you, right?
Yeah, right here.
You have the table, sir.
Do you wanna open the public hearing?
Yes. I'm gonna open the public hearing per RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B, room number three alpha. And this public hearing is to accept unanticipated funds in the amount of eighty-five thousand and two dollars and fifteen cents for, uh, for the disbursement of SB thirty-eight to spend on municipal roads and bridges. We are now open. Is there any comment on this before we accept it?
I got a comment.
That's all it is?
It was a pretty big surprise. I came in one day and Lee says, hey, we've got this money, eighty-five thousand dollars from the state. And I thought it was the highway block grant. So I was a little confused. And then we talked about a little more. So, no, no, this is something different. Can I break your bubble?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
You know what a shell game is?
They're still giving us the water.
Oh, I know.
Oh, yeah.
But doesn't mean your budget's going up.
Well, I would be very disappointed if the state was willing to cut all these towns, check for that kind of money to help boost your, your road issues when you take it and say, well, no, we're just gonna put a bad general fund. Because that's not the intent.
No, IT's...
It was a surprise.
It was a pleasant surprise. Thing is, two things that concern me about the road budget right now is the, uh, the fact that you, you have to take a little more out of your operating budget to cover the bridge.
Exactly.
And so that's a, that's a, that's a major thing that we're wondering.
And that's why this is a good thing this came in.
Exactly.
Timing is everything.
Can, when can we execute on this dollar, these dollars though?
It's in the bank right now.
So if we're gonna get the check...
We have to do the formal acceptance, so you haven't made that motion yet.
No, I know. But if we, once we accept it, if we do, if we do go over, we can, we have a little cash, we don't figure out a general funds to pay for the bridge, correct?
We wouldn't take it out of each other's money.
No, but the thing is...
It would come out of the highway department operating.
And then I wanna make sure we have money for snow in December too.
Yeah, but I mean, I was gonna have to rearrange and think, who would make it? But this just enables us to keep going with some more road projects.
Oh, absolutely. And the thing is, because you have a specific plan. And the thing is, I salute you.
And like I said, we gotta, obviously we're gonna have to tailor a little because there's been an increase in, in the structure.
Yeah, but you, the way you do your planning for on a year-to-year basis instead in lieu of a major mega bond issue is, is to me, I salute you because it's common, that's the way of doing it. No interest, no nothing.
No, I, I, I think that's a good, as long as the town can operate that way, I think it's great. Maybe a day when they have to do it differently, things change. The way everything operates changed. But right now, if we can do it, I agree with it. And I, I mean, again, I thought this was a pretty big surprise.
Oh, pleasant...
All the towns around us are getting it. They're going through the same process now of having the public hearing. It was a surprise. The House passed the bill and the governor signed it. I'm not exactly sure where they got the money from. If it was gas tax or whatever.
I think some of it was a gas tax.
I think there was several, yeah, several, several sources.
So your budget will be less this amount next year?
No.
I was thinking it would be this much.
This is, this is the money for order.
Yeah.
Gotta say that. I mean, that's what it was for. How long?
It was a block, it was a block grant, highway block grant. Lee? This is different than highway block grant.
Does this money, when we accepted it, this meeting, is it going into the general fund or is it going right into the highway?
I have to put it in a special liability account. It does not lapse according to the letter from the state.
That's correct.
And it's earmarked for roads and bridges.
Okay.
And the way the town...
I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, theoretically. Highway construction, reconstruction and maintenance, maintenance purposes.
Yeah, theoretically, you're not supposed to, well, you know, buy a fire truck or put it in school. But I mean, once it enters...
And it doesn't go into the general fund either.
I just wanted to double check. It'll end up, it stays in that.
Liability account.
Now, what happens at the thirty-first of the year?
Nothing. It says right in the letter. I, I've already contacted the town attorney and we'll be tracking it.
Oh, so it can...
Not the town attorney, the auditor.
So it can continue into...
If you decide not to do nothing with it this year, you can...
Okay, all right, I see, I see. So I, I misunderstood that. I thought it would just automatically...
I'll give you a copy of the letter.
Yeah, okay, I didn't...
No.
We just talked about it fairly quickly.
Yeah, no, it's not...
Lee said we had to have a public meeting, so I figured...
The public meeting is so we can get it, keep it in the account.
Accept it, yes.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, I didn't, I thought... The usage is specific and it's not non-lapseing.
I'm ready to make a motion now, I guess. Anybody else from the public wanna comment first?
I'll make a motion per RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B three A to accept the unanticipated funds in the amount of eighty-five thousand, two dollars and fifteen cents for the disbursement of SB thirty-eight to spend on municipal roads and bridges.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Again, this is non-actual, which is a good...
Yeah, okay, I, I thought it was.
No, specifically lined, clearly lined.
Good, I didn't, I missed that whole part at the start. I thought there was, I was a little disappointed they gave it to you in, in August. Right, you know, kinda that.
Oh, it kinda ends, it does, flash to bang, you can't do anything.
Exactly. But now, I, now it's non-lapseing. I think that sounds good.
Yep. All in favor? All right. Right now, a few dollars richer.
Good.
Okay, great.
You wanna expand on something while we're on the road subject or we gotta move on to something else?
No, you're, you're okay.
I talked with the people at Mexi, the whole, all the actual design, where the rebar goes and all that's done. We'll be getting a formal plan on that soon. Monday, they have a meeting and we'll get the production schedule. But right now, it looks like the thing will be all done and be ready to deliver it for the third or fourth week of September.
What color is it? Can we, great, it is just stone.
Concrete bridge.
Concrete bridge. Right. Because we, we've been holding a check for the first disbursement. When will that be going, Jeff?
We could actually do that any day now. I actually talked to him today. But he was, the man, the point man that I, you know, was going on vacation, he was giving the shop, the guys who had to do all the shop drawings and get the engineer stamp and all that. And I suggested to Lee, why don't we just pull on it till we get a little something? Not that I had any, not that I didn't anticipate that we weren't gonna do anything. They're not that kind of company, they'll fall through. But I thought, well, why front lawn?
Be a good deterrent.
Yeah, because they, they asked for, for to cover the engineering and a partial payment on that.
It's a good idea. We just went through that situation.
Well, that's what I thought. And again, this is a different type, different type of company.
Yeah.
And not that I had a single doubt in the world, but I just thought we oughta get a little something.
Yep.
And, and then like I said, I think the, the bill was like paid in thirty days or something. And the way the town pays its bills, which is immediately something.
Do you have a, and this is a tough question.
Yeah.
An estimated date.
On, for what?
Installation or even month.
I am gonna try to gear it up. So as soon as that thing can be delivered, we'll be putting it in the ground.
Okay.
That's the plan. And that's what I mean, the timeframe, third, fourth week of September. I wish it was a couple of weeks earlier, but that's still not bad. It's better than October.
You'll be all off grapevine?
Yep.
Okay.
No, it's, actually, it's gonna fall into place pretty good with that. But like I said, we really can't, we can't go down there and do too much work until we're closer because once you start taking the stuff out, it sits for any length of time. You gotta stabilize all the bankings and everything else. It has to be a fairly well-timed project, so...
The people installing it and removing the old one?
No.
You, you, you're...
We supply all the labor. They supply the manpower to help put it in and install it.
Basically, old bridge being disposed of?
Ah, it's basically rock rubble. We're gonna take it to the sand pit probably or whatever. It's got rock and con, some concrete in it. It's got some granite blocks that'll probably be used as ripper to stabilize the bankings.
Okay.
The corrugated metal pipe, whatever's left of that can go to the scrapyard.
Gotcha.
But there's, there's no hazardous waste there, you know?
Great, like that. We had a comment from the public.
Yeah. I was down to the Stock Pond area today. Went down, was walking the Hoyt Road. And it looks like the Bureau of Trails is, we doing a lot of trails. They had a ball. I'm gonna say twenty trucks or trails and nothing else down there. If Jeff starts working on this bridge, is it part of that railroad have to be blocked off while you're working? Or I might wanna suggest that you might wanna coordinate with what you're doing with like Bureau of Trails to make sure there's no button heads.
The, uh, the only thing we gotta really coordinate is a little larger than what's done now. They'll still have access to the parking lot.
Yep.
And the other side, I mean, it doesn't, you know.
And the the.
Yeah, and it shouldn't interfere with any of that.
Yeah.
We don't have to close railroad anymore than it is now, it's impassable now.
Right, but I'm just saying, the curve from where the people turn into the parking lot, where you're gonna be working right there with the bridge, is that?
Yeah, I mean, it's like any other road, we gotta maintain some level of.
Yeah.
Traffic.
I didn't know, I said, just for a suggestion, I'll say maybe to say to the Bureau of Trails, hey, we planning on doing this such and such.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, FYI, yeah, we can tell them. Well, I'm not gonna cater to them.
No, no, no.
They don't do a thing to cater to us.
Right, but I'm just saying, you know, just a current thing with them.
Yeah, I suppose we get closer then.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz like I said, there was quite a gang of state trucks down there today.
Yeah, it'd be interesting, again, you gotta wait till it's ready, till they get to call, hey, we're ready for you.
Well, yeah, it will, it won't be quite like that, I mean.
Yeah, right now.
Monday they have their meetings.
Yeah.
You know, the production meeting, it's slated to go in next, they don't have another one right now.
Okay.
So the forms are freed up for that, but they have to get the steel all in place, there's, there's problems, there's a, and David, it's something, there's a process.
I, I've already volunteered to bring the public.
Okay. Did you get that out of slush fund?
No, it's on.
Take it out of the eighty five thousand?
It's out of mine.
I can't take it out of the eighty five thousand? For barbecue? No?
Just for the residents on railroad, right?
Ah, there's a gal already promised, if she's still in town, she'd be the first one.
It should be interesting, good time. Well, the thing is, I think, uh, it wasn't, I thought when it was first approved, we saw that it was for public safety, really. Fire, fire department.
Mostly definitely, yeah, no, it is, it's, it's a key component.
Yeah.
Man, just took forever to get it done.
Can we have a ribbon cutting down there?
That's what I'm saying, that's a bumpy sport. Okay, anything else?
That's it, just, I just wanted, I figured you would ask me that question.
And I have something.
Yeah.
With the road cutting that we do along the roads.
Yes.
Uh, how necessary is some of it, if it's golden rods and brass? I'm just asking a question.
It's necessary. Well, I don't quite understand here.
Well, I got a complaint from a resident.
Cuz the flower value or?
No, cuz they mowed across the area of their property, and it's their land, they didn't want it touched, it's only golden rods, it'll fall with the snow. And actually, when you look at it, if you look at it, they mo- they kind of mowed what was in the ditch, but what's up near the road, because of a multitude of stakes, is still there. So I'm just trying to figure out if someone says.
We, we go around.
Yeah.
And mow one side of the road. The subcontractor does, does, does a very good job. Occasionally, there's confrontations with people, but ninety-nine percent of the people have no problem with it. I mean, they, they're glad to see it now. I, I don't know the specifics on this complaint.
Yeah.
Although, from what you're telling me, I got a pretty good idea.
Yeah.
And that neighborhood is very problematic. On anything we do over there, from snow renewable, pushing the snow off the road, to any number of things. I think it was a form of harassment, but that's just my thing. Well, like I said, we get, I mean, he goes around and mows, I think that's the brush.
I just want.
Anybody mows to the road.
I, I will talk to the individual also, just cuz I need to have both parts of the story, I can't.
I, I mean.
They sit on one, but I'm just wondering if it's problematic in front of someone's home, they say, don't cut. Is it?
Well, the home you're talking about is nothing problem. It's adjacent land, there's a field, if you come down the side of the road, there's brush and whatever.
My point being, they still have ownership of some of the property, and so, is it problematic if they say, don't touch it, to just go by and?
Now, when you say ownership, Bob, is it part of the right of way?
Yeah.
It's, it's actually in the right.
It's part of the town right of way.
So you have a right to maintain and all that.
Yeah, so I don't know.
Fifty feet per center.
Well, it varies.
Okay.
It's not necessarily.
My thought, if you leave golden rod one year, it'll brush the next year, and there'll be trees the year after that.
So I mean, we try to, like I said.
Cuz you know, you go down some of the roads and you see a lot more than what there is there.
Yeah.
So I, you know, I just have to have an understanding and, you know, if, if it is, that, you know, that's part of, uh, you know, the person's.
I mean, what I tell people a lot of times, if they, you know, they have some issues with that, is if you wanna come out and take care of yourself, we'll let you. If you don't think we're doing the job the way you'd like it done, you can come out and clean the stuff on the side of the road, brush it or all that. But I mean, it's just, he doesn't stop when he's mowing because, oh, this is going on the grass. Pick it up, and I don't need to mow that, and then put it down twenty-five feet later, cuz this brush, they just continue with the pass.
Unless you're going down my road.
Your road.
You probably saw the guy's machine there for two weeks, cuz they had to take the blade off.
Yeah, I was kinda glad they did your road, it was really grown in.
Yeah, but they keep hitting those cables everywhere.
So, I don't know, I mean, typically, you know, we do everything, we don't skip around.
Well, Bob's gonna take a look at that complaint and then figure out.
I'm just trying to find a remedy, some kind of, if there is a remedy, there may not be a remedy.
Yeah, I, for what I'm saying, there isn't.
Was it a written complaint, Bob?
No, it's a very verbal complaint.
Um, can I just say that in the, in the past, the town gets occasional calls, and I think the ones that might complain are not aware of the town's right of way area, and once you explain it to them, the, it starts at the building level, whether it's new construction, new to the res- uh, home in the area, they are made aware that you can't put rock walls, you can't put, um, fences, you can't, you know, we are not liable for damaging your property if you insist on putting your, this, in the town's right of way, cuz we have a right to maintain that area for the safety.
In the spring, what time do you start, summer, spring, when do you start cutting normally?
Usually, it's around this time, first of August typically.
Okay. Cuz, yeah. We could put a thing in Hot Topics, just say, town will be maintaining the roads right away, just, just an FYI.
We cover it, we don't specifically say, but when we have a road meeting in the spring, we always cover that. Yeah, town will be mowing.
Hot topics, roadside.
Just, just as an FYI, you know, why these people coming, coming on my property, but things.
Well, they're not, the tractor stays, the stack track, the machine stays on the roadway.
Right.
Maybe the shoulder will attack, and has an iron that reaches up. So it's, it's not like they're blatantly going on someone's property and driving down through the ditch and up on their lawn and all that. Everything is done from them.
Yeah, I guess there's some sensitivity to that, that's all.
Yep.
I think knowledge, knowledge is important.
If we went by your house or your neighbor's house, and you have that situation across the street, I mean, they have flowers and manicured flower beds outside the road, we don't mow them over, we go around them.
But you did, I remember, I remember specifically, they were putting rocks a little closer and closer, and you said, hey, I gotta have some.
Can't be doing this.
Yeah, can't be doing that.
It makes, but what I mean is if it's a manicured flower bed or, or an ornamental bush or something that's by a mail, whatever, we don't go after it and mow that down, but it's just, you know, general golden rod grass.
I remember on Jay Drive, you had somebody put trees on the right of way, and asked them to move those back and take them down.
Yep, yep.
You know, and.
Because they were getting problematic.
So, so just a quick blurb on the Hot Topics section.
Yeah.
I'm gonna thank you.
I'll put a reminder in my calendar and ask John, when, let me know whoever's doing it.
Typically, it's around the first of August seems to be the target date, the stuff is gotten up.
We'll just do that, remember, is next year we're gonna do it.
Because he does put up the big orange flags that says mower ahead.
Yeah, just as a safety thing.
Yeah.
But the thing is.
I refer these calls to the chair of the board.
This is what he's trying to do tonight. And I respectfully, I said, I delegated. Okay, let's move on, folks.
Yeah, that's fine, but that, that's, we don't skip around.
Okay, thank you.
That's what you're asking.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the answer I needed, though.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I, after we, yeah.
So the horse kept going around the barn to finally.
Yeah, after a while, so that's what he's looking for.
Okay. Now, let's receive, uh, motions, I need motions to accept some money, additional money. Uh, we have some for Old Home Day event, and we also have some race across Dunbar.
I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, Old Home Day funds of a hundred and twenty dollars per hour, say thirty-one, colon ninety-five dash B three.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Oh, wait a minute, second. Second motion first.
Come on, second.
Try to short.
I did, so.
I know the question, uh, under debate.
I'm not sure, but I don't think you guys closed the public hearing for the money.
You are correct, sir. The road agent was just rambling on about stuff.
No, I, I didn't wanna forget what I had to say.
Okay.
I made a ball of the ball.
Okay, it's, uh, we're.
Close the public hearing at?
Eight.
Eight twelve.
I'm making, uh, we're gonna close the public hearing at eight twelve?
For the?
For the acceptance of SB thirty-eight dollars.
Lot to remember, you know, aside the table.
Oh, I got this one.
Pretty easy on this one.
Pretty easy on this. But we try, we try. And the public helps us too, that's why we don't shut up dialogue with the public, cuz normally it's value added. All right.
We, we all said aye on that motion?
Yeah, I made the second.
We all said aye.
Okay, I'll make another motion to accept the race across Dunbar in the amount of two hundred and twenty-two dollars per hour, say thirty-one, colon ninety-five dash B three B.
Any discussion? A second first, do I have a second for that?
I'll give you a second.
Thank you.
I thought you would do it. A little bit of discussion is, I think the roof reads are only going in the cemetery.
No.
All in, all in favor?
Aye. Just, uh, as a side note, Old Home Day, I thought the, uh, it was a good day, the weather was good, uh, trade was good. Uh, I say kudos to everyone who worked on that event.
Yeah, it was very nice.
Yeah.
They were very, they were understaffed and they worked really hard.
And even Dave had to get the oldest resident out there, he had to twist his arms to get the oldest resident out there for the parade.
Oh, a note to that, a note to that day, um, it was brought to my attention that the building was unlocked. And then, it was brought to my attention, a half hour later, it was unlocked, so that we'd have a legal handicap bathroom.
Yep.
Which is, I, I was okay with, but I thought, you know, the selectman's office is locked up, and then all these offices are open, maybe we could put some sort of latch on this.
These doors are closed and they are locked, so.
So the office doors are locked.
Typically, every year, for the past ten years, we close the side doors, which one would be locked, the other one would just be closed.
Yep, and I checked it, and they were closed.
And, um, it just allows that individual to get through to the bathroom for handicap.
Okay.
And I, I don't think we even put a, a poster on the door.
Nope.
And I came and locked the building at the end of the day, and I don't think anybody used the bathroom, cuz I didn't see any, it had been cleaned in the morning.
Okay.
It was there in case, you know.
Overall, I thought it was a great day.
Yeah, it was very nice, yeah, looked like it went well.
And the, the music, the first, the starting band and the music, it was, it was a mock identity, I believe?
Yeah, Never's Band.
Never's Band?
Yeah.
They were really, their music was very tasteful.
Yeah, they're, they're always great.
Yeah.
And I don't know who got the little young kid with a kilt to play the bagpipe, he was outstanding.
Oh, my God, that was very impressive.
Cause he played all the way down from on the road.
Things, I'm looking, I'm looking, I'm looking, I'm, then all of a sudden, there's a little, I think he's nine years old.
Nine, I thought he was six, but.
No, but nine years old, nine year old plays bagpipes.
His name is Matthew.
Matthew, very, very talented young man.
Yeah.
I couldn't believe that was coming out of him, I'm like, it's gotta be somebody behind him.
Recording or something, yeah?
His, his mother told me that he's so small, that he does not have a complete bagpipe yet.
Wow.
He's got about, like a half a one, but he was outstanding, really.
Right, it was, great addition. Okay, let's move on, uh, budget time, let's talk about the maintenance. We got some, we got a couple things that Lee got us out before, we got some more projects to do. I, I'd like to bring the attention to a, uh, spreadsheet first.
Okay, so basically, the large spreadsheet you have, that you pack it.
No.
Column D is.
Why not even need my glasses?
No, column D is everything that was, uh, proposed for the budget, in our wish list that we set the budget by. And then, um, column F is everything, uh, excuse me, column G is everything that we've expended to date. So the to- our budget for two thousand seventeen building maintenance was set at seventy thousand dollars. Our wish list of items, um, for, uh, estimates in quotes that we had set, came to forty-eight thousand, eight ninety-five, the board at budget season set that budget line with a little excess, so that we, for incidentals. So that was set at seventy thousand, so that gave us an excess of twenty-one thousand at the budget setting time. Um, to date, in column G, with items that were either approved at a board meeting or through the budget, we've expended twenty-three thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars. And then we have added pending, so in column J, we have some items that the board has approved. Um, one of them is the highway doors, uh, garage doors, that's still pending, we haven't gotten bills on that yet. Uh, the lib-, um, lighting for the fire and police, that's still pending. Um, the town office painting, that is still pending, those items, along with cleaning the carpet that we are committed to, comes to twenty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars. So, overall, total expenses to date will be forty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. Out of that seventy thousand dollar budget, that leaves unaccounted twenty-two thousand two hundred and forty-seven. I figure it might be easier if I just kinda touch on some of those numbers.
So.
So the reason for this is so that we can plan, we have a couple of, um, quotes that we need to consider. Um, and I thought it was easier to try to put a couple of things together, so that.
Thanks for blowing this up, my hopes.
So essentially, there's twenty-two thousand dollars of, uh, we still have several items on the wish list, which we have not addressed yet.
There's one you mentioned in the meeting when I showed you the spreadsheet.
Oh, like the library door?
Oh, the library door is not listed on here, it's a wish list item, so that would be something that we wanted.
Couple others, we have the, the floor and the transfer station.
Right, oh, the transfer station.
Was in our wish list budget here.
And how about the roof, remember, we got the roof shingles in the pictures a couple of weeks back?
I have that quote for tonight, we gave us three quotes, we're ready to make.
That's on the sheet here.
That's our next thing. But I wanted, before we just spend money, I wanted to see, let everyone know where we.
Where we are. So we have, um, unaccounted budget of twenty-two thousand two hundred and forty-seven.
So as things come in.
Things can get.
Yeah, as things still come in, we can, we have money still in the budget, we can approve. For example, uh, Woody has three quotes as requested from us, and he's, we, where, he's gonna recuse himself from the discussion, cuz he knows a couple of people. And, but, uh, Lee, Lee has a spreadsheet, if you look at the little spreadsheet, this, we have the three quotes here, three quotes listed on the spreadsheet, and I have the actual quotes here.
Are you going right to this section?
We, we can, we can. The thing is, uh, we can knock that out, then after we knock out that's, the roofing issue, we can talk about whatever, what we have remaining with for the twenty-two thousand dollars for the rest of this year. What about six months of maintenance, and there's some things that have to be done.
Because I know that one item that we put on hold was painting and repairing the highway garage, because we did, opted to go with the electrical, because we had a grant match, so we felt it was important to just apply that money, but if something else, weather stays good, you have the money, and you board the sites, let's try to get some hope to get to work then. Might be, do it this year after all, but.
It's a possibility.
It's always good to hold on, like last year, right in, uh, December, I think it was, fire department's furnace failed, and that was a three thousand dollar expense that we weren't expecting it.
I don't think we have to take it down to zero that quickly.
Right.
I don't think so either, the only other thing I've, as we looked at the library, going up to look at those things, we have some blocks, the corner plant blocks that are actually falling off the building. And my thought was, maybe we should look at a little bit of this. Uh, maybe when we have Tuttle here working on this building, we talk about those corners just a little bit, because the water's getting behind them, and if we allow them to fall off, it could be a lot worse, uh, next year, so.
Yep.
It might not be a huge part of the budget, but we might wanna look at that.
You could probably caulk and reseal.
Just re- reapply caulk and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The thing is, the only, the only issue, the, the big, uh, the only big thing, and the big expense is the man life.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the killer. And he even explained that to me, he says, this, this building is being done for peanuts compared to the, uh, library, because there's no, there's ladders involved.
Right.
There's no man life.
And then, one thing else that was brought to my attention, when I had a carpenter available to look at the library door, the problem that they're having right now is just gonna start right over again, because they.
Water's not.
We need some kind of gutters.
Yeah, we discussed that at the meeting too, so.
To, you know.
So I think that building and those gutter areas, we discussed when we were up there looking at the door.
Yeah.
Need to be addressed, because you're exactly right, that door will rot within two years again, if we don't.
And the gutters, I mean, just to do some seamless gutters, wanna be.
They're not that expensive.
No.
Yeah, and they're fast, they can put one along the side, and then along the little, um, shed that's over the basement downstairs, two gutters, so that one catches the rain from that area, and then just sends them off.
And we know, if any, there's gonna be some reconstruction in the future there, but we need to do something now to prevent the investment of the door.
Yeah, yeah.
Agreed, okay, so those are some of the things we're targeting, and what else are we targeting before we go on to Woody then? Uh, you can look at the, uh, there's a couple, there's a several things on the transfer station, uh, that's going on right now. Woody, I just wanna know, the, uh, the broken window, you got quotes on that, or you're gonna execute on that?
I have one price on it so far.
How much, how much is it?
A hundred and seventy-seven even.
Your quote was excellent, your estimate, brother.
Oh.
You estimated two hundred dollars.
Yeah, so that's with the window in installed?
Yes.
Okay.
OT, I see the whole transfer station.
Yeah, see, see, so he's, he's got some things down there too. So we got, we got the biggest, the big things, and we got the, uh, library, a couple issues of the library, that's gonna need about a few dollars. Uh, door gutters, and maybe some repair on the.
Not huge money, though, I don't think, few thousand.
Yeah.
Jeff, are there any, um, portions of your building that are so naked of paint that it might cause rotting? You know, so.
There's already some minimal.
There's already some minimal rot.
I don't think there's anything to rebuild. I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Just figured we'd ask you, since you were sitting here.
Yeah.
Nothing stands out, but, you know, when it gets over there, they start painting and stuff.
Right, you walk it by.
Is there one building, you, you use more than one building there, would you wanna paint them all, or just ones, which ones you're painting, wanna paint, priority?
The, I, the main building needs to paint the soonest, but then our salt shed is gonna need to paint something.
So you're talking the garage, which is the main building, right?
Yes, the garage, the shop, the salt shed's just a three sided building, it's kinda tall, but it's got T one eleven on it, and that was painted with a solid stain on the way to build.
Yeah, it's all, it, it's.
Yeah.
Stain.
Capital, it's all the stain.
Yeah. At least it won't suck up as hard as how we're with this time.
No, but it, it's in the sun, so I mean, it.
Yeah.
You know how it is.
Yep. Okay, so, uh, let's, let's go right to the, uh, there's a short spreadsheet. And I also have three, the quotes from the, uh, the actual quotes, Lee has took the highlights of the quotes. I have the individual quotes, if you wanna see them. Uh, mon- monetary wise, I thought, uh, two were very close, on the high side, and the third was, uh, about half the amount, or at least a thousand dollars less. As you can see, right, as you can see right here.
Right at the top for this.
Right.
And this roof is on the, uh, compactor area?
That's a yes, he's nodding.
Yes.
It says here, container on one of these bids will be provided to get rid of debris.
Yes.
Um, as they're providing it.
No, we're providing it.
Okay. Doesn't it make any sense for us to pay for something at a higher rate than we're gonna pay to rid of ourselves?
And when I read those in the quotes, I'm saying, geez, I mean, the stuff's right there.
Right. Maybe they're making a note that we're gonna, I, I took it as they were providing, but it looks like it could be a note also stating that we're providing it.
Yeah, but it all.
Container will be provided to get rid of job debris.
Right, and the thing is, it could've been a boilerplate application too. Do you wanna see that one, Bob? Can I see the others?
Yeah.
There's a lot of detail.
No.
Actually, there's no detail.
No, that's why there's nothing on the sheet.
Um, we have concern about the landscaping, that's gonna be protected.
Landscaping?
And all the personal property down there too. As I said, I think it was a boilerplate, uh, bid, so I'm gonna give the gentleman a, a pass. Get ready for this as well.
Yes. I noticed that one didn't have any ice and water on it.
That building's unheated?
Unheated.
I like the fact that they are using architectural shingles, it should last a little longer. My, my, uh, my contractor at my house, I wanted a metal roof, he goes, you don't need no metal roof. He goes, get, get, like, you'll, you'll be dead before you have shingles or we'll need replacement. Long gone.
The only thing I don't see on any of them, um, references. I mean, I don't know if this is their expertise or if this is just something that, um. They don't, because it's a fairly small job or. They typically need to provide, um. Certificate of Insurance.
They all, they all, they all have the certificate of insurance.
Yeah.
Does it say on it?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, good.
Yeah, uh. Where it's town property, I have to tell you, there's no lifetime guarantee with it.
And you saw this one too?
Yeah, I saw all three of them.
Okay, good.
Westbrook, isn't that family here local as well?
Yes.
Well, there are addresses right there.
Yeah. This is where? This is over. I don't know, I, I think the prices are.
I'm gonna say that, looking at these prices, it's an unheated building. And, um, how many square were on that building? Did any of them say?
I don't know.
Well, I can't do any quick math without the number of square, but.
How big is the building?
Who? Like nineteen by thirty-six or something, it was odd size.
Two sixteen.
Yeah.
Uh, a little less than seven square.
Being a, being an unheated building, I'm inclined to give the, uh. The cheaper one a chance at only because he gave a clear description of what he was gonna do. He's using shingles that have the same, they're limited lifetime warranty, which Bob was gonna state. On a commercial building is not gonna be effective anyway.
Right.
So he gives a two-year, uh, warranty on his own above and beyond that warranty that he'll come back if there's any workmanship issues.
If you look at the other one for twenty-four hundred or whatever, essentially is.
Yeah. That's falling back on the manufacturing warranty.
Yeah, well, when he, when he's guaranteeing the labor and everything, it's his life for as long as you own it. That don't, you know, you know yourself, you're chasing someone.
It's limited lifetime, they'll give you like three dollars a square back.
Great.
So. I, I'm inclined where he's a local person that lives here, that we give him a try for that much saving for the town.
And the other thing is you've gotten prices from century before in town and so if someone else gets it, maybe somebody will get a little more competitive.
I think that's a good time.
Yep. I think we have consensus, Lena, can we, um, we're gonna repair your forty?
Do you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the Westbrook Construction LLC bid to repair the. Old building of the transfer station.
It's a compact.
Compact building.
I was gonna let Dave second it for, because he's been making all the motions, I second that one too.
Any further discussion? I would say, let's get this done while we have before the window. Lena, I'll pass it to you for.
Is there a signature page on his contract?
No.
Okay.
Well, you can accept the bid on the, they have it as a common interest. Woody, who did you know they decided to rouse you?
I'm familiar with, uh, two of them.
Okay.
Yeah, and not century, the other two.
Okay.
They used to hay up to Westbrook's and.
Gotcha.
That's where it's at.
Okay. Alright, so we gotta get some work, some ideas going on the, uh, the maintenance just for the library. You wanna talk to Tuttle when he comes by or?
Um, I think while he's working here, we'll have time to talk, but Lena, I was wondering, I know that, um.
The window. Um, I can make a quick call with seamless gutters to see if we can maybe get some.
I know that Builders', um, insulation.
Yeah.
On the Manchester Auburn line. Does those typically for about four dollars a foot installed with a lifetime warranty and the downspouts.
The gutters?
Yep, and the downspouts about an equivalent price.
Okay.
So I think if we get an estimate from them and I also know that Quality Ins- Insulation in Concord does them as well.
Okay.
So if we can maybe get another, a couple of numbers on the gutters.
I'll get your Maria on that right away.
We'll take an, an action on that before we do the door and not have that water dumping on the brand new door.
Good, yeah, that's good there. Quality insulation, you said?
Yeah, and Concord does them as well. Those are the two that I know of.
Uh, so one's building, Builders' Insulation, the other one's called Quality Insulation.
Okay, so, I, I think we can give him consensus and give him a no on this one.
Um, Lena, I'm just thinking aloud, Energy Improvements is another one right there located in Concord.
Okay, Energy Improvements.
Probably needs some, uh, around the corner than a downspout to bring out a little bit of further away from the building.
Mm-hmm, yeah, sure.
What is this in, in one of the doors?
Uh, no, this is, uh, Woody, what windows this one?
It's in my overhead door.
Overhead doors.
Oh, it's in your overhead door.
Yeah, we have duct tape holding it right now.
And this is the door company doing it or no, just Grant State Glass?
Yes.
Um, did we make any efforts to call the door company? Do we even know who installed them? Is there a sticker on the door?
Yes, I know who did it. I don't know if he does glass though and try, I tried to get it back out for other stuff and it's been kinda.
It isn't a bigger company that did it?
No.
So he, but he, he estimated two hundred dollars last year in the budget cycle. So he came and wore the gold budget.
I don't have any problem doing this to get it fixed, what I only thought was that if we, if you called the door manufacturer, you could probably get a new insert, but. Even that would have to be installed by them, so I doubt it would be cheaper.
It's a, um, if, I don't know much about doors, it's a single pane of glass, it's not like an insulated, the door. There's an insulated panel and then it has glass panels.
Oh.
They're like a single pane of glass, like the old, I don't know, like somebody's windows.
Yeah, they're probably tempered, so.
Nope, it's a tempered, no, 'cause it cracked. It's not tempered glass.
Yeah, but tempered holds together, it doesn't shatter.
Yeah, it's not tempered glass, 'cause it put a big crack.
What tempered means is it shatters into small pieces so it doesn't cut a kid.
So it's not tempered.
But annealed glass.
I don't know what that means.
Neat. Neat glass. You don't have to write that down, no. They actually came out and looked at what we had.
Oh, good, good.
I'm, I'm, uh, I don't have a problem with this, we have it in the budget, it's under budget.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, they're gonna take care of it right, right away. Wanna make a motion, Bob?
Yeah, I'll make the motion there. Reproach the, uh, the, uh. The purchase of the glass for a hundred and seventy-five, the installation of the glass. Hundred and seventy-seven dollars, a hundred and seventy-seven, oh yeah, it is, one seventy-seven.
Woody, did you wanna call on the glass and the roofer? Do you want our office to do it?
Either way, I'll get together with Lena.
Okay.
And figure out.
I'll second Bob's motion.
Basically, new glasses, a glass that's been, uh, is, it goes through a process of temperature control, drying. It's critical to its durability, glass has been not annealed, retains the thermal stresses caused by, uh, cooling. Which can definitely decrease strength and reliability of product, so it's less likely to crack or shatter when subjected to relatively small temperature changes. More mechanical shock, mechanical shock or stress. You get special glass, my friend.
Cool.
It's irreputable.
Yeah, crank it big with the truck.
I hear you. I've dealt with crack on mine too.
Make sure, get me a. Okay, let's move on with the agenda.
I think, uh, we're on the general business.
Okay. Um, yeah, let's go through the inbox. Talked about this already, just talked about, uh, we had the ability to, uh. Lean to the little research to make sure we were legally and, uh, it was brought up tonight, voters can actually change the, uh, voting hours before it's left, I mean, either or.
How many times do you need to sign this one, Bob? Do you sign them all?
Did I sign it again?
Yes, this has been on the box, so I'll hand it to you after. We have a request for leave for Lena, I think we'll let her take some leave.
Oh. September?
I'm actually.
Is that budget season?
No, it's actually set, um, MS one, uh, Department of Revenue, uh, assessment time, but. I've got my utility value, so the assessor was in today to finalize those numbers, we're inputting it into our tax program, so.
Yeah.
I should, I'm, I'm scheduled to work next Monday, I should be able to get these numbers to the Department of Revenue.
It's only one day.
One day on one and four on the next.
There's two over there.
Oh, I didn't see the.
Let me sign them. You'll take hold on that.
I wish, but, uh, no, John will be there when I get, before I forget. I need to take off beginning of December.
We'll have to take a quarter going through.
I'm gonna be gone eight days.
Okay, hey, we just got you sharpening up on these.
Alright, other stuff that kind of came up, uh, it said the planning board this, uh, this week, the, uh. Or stable barn was approved by the planning board to move forward. They still have, uh, they wanna, they wanna address one issue, but it was approved with a, uh, a drainage culvert, but they're challenging the grave. They wanna challenge the drainage culvert. As I understand, Jeff, they, you wanna have them pay for a third-party engineer to.
Yeah.
And it'll be administrative change to the plan. But I think is that, but the plan has been approved and I think, uh, they were happy, I think the planning board was happy that they had got some, uh, business moving forward this time.
Now, they, uh, they have a, they have a drainage on that plan already.
They did total drainage calculations. My position as the road agent, the ambient on the planning board. Was about some of the water coming down the driveway and creating more of an issue on Kibble Pond Road, which is somewhat problematic. And there was a little pushback because of, I had no idea what the cost was. According to the developer or the horse barn owner, he got some estimates that it was pretty extreme. And if the numbers he said are correct, it is pretty extreme. And his engineer that he hired didn't feel it really needed, was gonna be a problem. So there's a couple of lesser things they were gonna do. I thought that I liked, I thought it was a great idea. We had a couple preliminary met, meetings and the engineer came up with that. And I thought it was a good thing, but it's still undecided. Rather it's overthinking the issue, which it could very well be. And so that's why we decided that we'd move it along, because the concept of the whole thing was good, except for this one issue. And we discussed it at great length with them and they were comfortable doing it and they're gonna.
So you're gonna, you're gonna work with them on it?
Yep, third-party engineer is gonna come in and, you know, I don't, I wouldn't.
It's gonna sat, it's gonna satisfy you essentially.
And, yeah, and I, and I think we can do it. I don't think it's a, gonna be a big stumbling block. I think it can be done.
Well, I'm glad that you guys worked with them, because I think that, you know, it had been in there quite a while and I think that that. You know, showed some effort to keep things rolling.
It did, it did. It was, uh, it was taking a long time and, uh, but the thing is, um, uh, I think Ken Squeezey's, he deserves some, uh, some clues.
I mean, they started the process with zoning board in April.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, and they.
You, you were, we're both on that.
They missed some meetings and stuff, I mean, for whatever reasons.
It's before.
Yeah, with the planning board too, you know, not having stuff ready, so they were finally ready, so.
I think they were changing engineers.
Oh, yeah, no, there was a lot, there was some.
Minor issues of time constraints to get stuff done. As you said before, it's a planning phase, that's why they call it planning, right?
Exactly. So that was some good news, but I'm, I was glad to see it before. Yeah, no, I, I think everybody was happy. Alright, I'm gonna open up for public comment now. Woody, anything?
Just that, um, is the board gonna be doing some walkarounds of town buildings like down the transfer, just for future budget stuff?
Absolutely, yes.
I think now that we're getting a cap on, on where we're at, you know, I think that we'll be able to, you know, look into different areas.
We budgeted the money to be put towards maintenance, we wanna use it appropriately.
Right, no, I just, you know, before it starts getting too late at night and.
No.
Snow and bad weather, you know, we can actually see buildings and.
If, if you have any specifics, bring them to Lena, I think that all of us are available sometime during the week.
Yeah.
And we can stop down and see, you can point out a few things to us, so.
Okay, even if we have to, uh, like on a, a Thursday, we can meet six-thirty down there, just. Okay. I'll meet there and just walk down there before the meeting, we can do that too.
Yep.
Yeah, or if you wanna get, you know, with Lena and Tull, you know, have a look at these three items, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I know it was talked about, but I hadn't heard any more about it, so I just.
No, we, we did the library, I think you, you deserve to do justice too.
Well, I think as you see tonight though, we got your roof done and we've got.
Right, right, no, but I mean, you know, all the buildings, like, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Jeff has three buildings and I've got three buildings and fire and police and.
Oh, just on site, Jeff, do you wanna, do you wanna get some, uh, pursuit quotes on that one building that you think needs it? Uh, painting quotes?
Painting?
Yeah.
I can contact the three that we got quotes.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know time-wise, logistically, for the time of season it is and their workloads, if it'd be anything anybody could fit in or. If it would be better to do it in the spring when people are running the line up there, their work.
Well, we'll, we'll, if you.
You know, all I'm getting at?
Yes, but the thing is either, uh, I'll meet with you.
Yeah.
So you can walk me around, show me what, exactly, then I can meet with these folks and show them, so you can't be in two different places.
The, the individuals that gave us the quotes for this building said that they would be willing to sign a contract, so we can encumber the funds.
Oh.
For early spring and that work would work out well also.
Alright, then I just need to meet with you during the week sometime, just to walk with you in your office down there and just walk me around, show me exactly what's going on.
Okay.
Your nice office.
Cause you've got a lot of nails that are popping.
Yeah, it's gonna need a little labor.
They need some of the, a bit of labor.
And then. You know, there's some cracked boards and the siding and stuff like that. At the end of the day, a lot of this, I think, needs to be replaced, this is the nail off that are screwed or whatever has to be done, like. Secure better, but I don't, it's not a, well, what do you think, Bob? What's your take on it?
That's just no suspicion.
You know, I have to tell you that it's faster than the screw gun is the nail.
Yeah.
And they'll just have to re, they'll put on new nails and just pull the old ones out, you know.
Yeah.
Do you have a few rotted spots too?
Yeah.
You know, but it's not a big problem, but it's gonna be the saturation of whether. Hopefully they'll use stain would probably work a lot better than paint.
Yeah, I don't know the whole history.
Cause it's gonna suck it, I mean, you look at it, it's dry.
I don't know what the history.
It'll suck it right in and stain, at least they go over twice and all.
I agree, the stains gotta, that way it won't peel if it's stained.
The previous paint.
Out of the twenty-two we just spent.
Twenty, well, no, we spent thirteen and.
Yeah, and three hundred, yeah, so we're still over twenty.
Okay, I'm sorry, uh, no, I totally, so we got a, a walkabout for your transfer station, either as a group on a Thursday evening or individually.
Individually.
Yeah, but delineate, delineate what you want.
Okay.
Uh, to be looked at. Okay, sir.
Yes, uh, Fred Mullin, is the, uh, the issues with the rafters in the town hall been resolved?
Um, yes and no. Uh, we contacted our lawyers, uh, referencing, uh, the MFA that basically show up all summer to do any work. And be, we were ready to send a letter, a termination letter or et cetera and take them to task, you might say legally.
Mm-hmm.
That never came to fruition because they finally came back to us, they have a different project manager and they're engaging us now. They, they, they want to, uh, complete the project and so we're giving them the opportunity.
They were ready to start working and bringing the steel down last week and I said, can't get it outside and off the premise before a whole home day, you're gonna have to wait, so. He has been, etc.
But they're, they're, they're engaging and so we're optimistic, cautiously optimistic.
And Fred, after our letter, I think that the new project manager maybe and or the owner of the company realized that. If they didn't finish that project, it could affect their future bonding.
Right.
So they didn't wanna black mark on their company and I think that's probably what pushed them to actually.
It gives them a black eye too, as far as where the walls.
Right.
Yeah.
But I think that, you know, bonding is very hard to come by for those companies, so you don't want your bonding reduced. So I think that was, uh.
So, we're gonna be vigilant, just watch that, and the thing is, Mike, I'd like to see that come to, uh, the finality by the end of the year. But the, uh, the, uh, one of the suppliers of the steel, uh, Coen Steel?
Yeah.
Is gonna re-manufacture, uh, the steel to the correct measurements. And then, uh, but there's a, there's a whole labor issue of getting the steel back out of the library on the ground, delivered and then back into the library. That's, but that's a challenge.
Right.
At least, at least if the weather's, uh, getting cooler for them to work up there anyhow.
Exactly. But thank you for asking, no, that's been a, uh, an albatross around this board's neck since we, uh, started looking at that in, early this year.
I'm glad they're coming to do it now, at least we don't have to hire somebody else to try and do that same work.
Well, and number one is you gotta go through the whole litigation process.
And, and they're three quarters of the way paid, so it would've been a real. It would've pushed another.
The other, the other quarter's going to Coen Steel. That's the problem though with asking for references. It's a double-edged sword, when they ask for references, they're gonna give you all the ones that get good.
Right.
You, you don't think they're gonna use Dunbar on another project and have the, you get a call and say, how'd they work out? Cause you're gonna say, you know, we have to go to our attorney to get them to move.
Yeah.
You've been in the construction industry like I have for many, many years, you see what goes on too.
Anything else, sir?
Right, okay.
Oh, no, no. Okay, I think I'm bringing, I'm gonna bring back to the, uh, the selectmen first.
Well, I'd like to go over the park bench since I think we all had a time to look at it out there and the location of it. I looked at it when Mike was out there the other day and, uh.
I think we came up with easily five easy locations.
Yeah. In a specific location, um, unless Bob has a specific spot, you know, I, you know, Mike and I were talking, even out front here, there's no place to sit. Right across the parking lot, if you wanted to have your lunch out there, sit down for a few minutes, there's no, no place to sit here, I think it could go multiple spots, but. As selectmen, if we wanted to pick a, a definitive area, I don't have a problem with that either.
My, my point with all of this was, originally, they've gone, the, these people were given conditions by which they could put the park bench in there.
Right.
They met all the conditions, they let the selectmen know and the selectmen reneged.
Yep.
So I think it's kinda honoring a commitment, again, uh, it's been mentioned. You don't wanna see everybody coming in here wanting a, a bench out there.
Yeah.
But the fact is, it was approved the first time, the minute they let them know, you know, that they've got the bench, I guess, uh, citizens. Citizens Bank got the bench for them, you know, and they said, um, no, we're not gonna put the bench out there.
Well, I know that since I've been on the board, um, I flipped over, and on our agenda, that bench has been on there since I've been on the board, so, um.
It's been on there for a few years.
I would like to get that, uh, moving on our agenda and, uh.
I think we're in consensus that we're all in favor of that, however, we just have to use some sensitivity and a little dignity when we talk to the family.
Yeah, I'd be willing to approach him on that, I, I know the family and.
And I think you could speak on behalf of the board. Do, are you ever any issue with that?
No.
Okay. Do you guys wanna make a motion tonight to, uh, allow them to put the bench on the town common? At an agreed upon spot?
I thought we had, we did.
We didn't make the motion.
I, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the, uh, town common bench.
All right, I'll second the motion. And I'll put a, I'll put a note in there on that motion that it's in an agreed upon spot that's discussed with the selectmen.
Right.
Did you make the motion to start this right or something?
Yes, I did.
You, you seconded, right?
Yeah. A motion to allow the.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, Jeff, I'm glad you're still here. There was a tree by, um, I, I'm taking.
You've taken my stuff, I was, I'm still finishing.
I tell ya. Should we give it, hey, who wants to do it? Come on, who wants to?
I had brought up when Mike and I were looking at bench locations.
Yeah.
Over by the statue, we took down a nice maple there.
Yes.
I thought it was a little premature, but I think you said the center was starting to rot.
Yeah, when you were on, I've got some grief from Eric Hodger in the body.
Oh, did you?
Fun grief, just fun grief. He told me he missed sitting on his porch looking at that tree, cause on his side, where you looked at, was a beautiful crown on that cedar tree. On the roadside, it was hollowed out and rotten, and it actually had split in it, and so, we were having some storms and stuff. Kept my eye on it, and it seemed like it was getting a little bigger, and I opted with the, that border selectmen, we talked about it, that maybe we ought to be a little proactive, cause there's a statue there, and the water had drawn. You know, who's to say, it might've lasted twenty years, I don't know.
With this, with the selectmen, I was hoping to be proactive in replacing that tree like the one you put here, and actually doing whatever you need to do, setting it back for the summer, or whatever else to, uh, you know, replace that tree.
That wasn't the issue, other than the power company had to keep permanent trees, the issue was it had kinda been the end of its life.
I, um, I kinda wanted to keep it back enough so that the tree could develop around like somewhere nicer ones here, and not have it one sided by the power company.
Yeah.
And, um, makes sense. I didn't know what the board thought about that, and also, what funds we were gonna use if we did replace the tree.
I'd make a suggestion, if you wanna hear it.
Where, where all our issues?
Yes.
In the past, the trees that you're talking about that got replaced.
Yeah, I saw one here.
The town forest committee put it in the old house.
Okay.
I can't speak for them.
They don't have any money.
I can't speak for them. The treasurer doesn't like department, I can tell you that. However, if, I can't speak for them, but the thing to do, I would think, we could request and talk to them, come to our next meeting.
Okay.
And just, one of you'd like to, or if you want, um, if you notify me, the agenda, I'll go to the meeting and.
It's, it's been done in the past, but again, I'm just, I'm just one member.
We would have to definitely have a vote, but it has been done. Bob, are you in consensus with replacing the tree?
Sure, I mean, till we.
Yeah, a little wait.
Right, right, but the general, I, I, we're not, we're not in a general consensus, we are in agreement.
I mean, those trees out there, to me
Yeah.
are what kinda make our, our town.
Exactly.
When Fred was cooking, he had some shade, you know, people out there use those trees, the shade out there is, is great, and I noticed on that side of the building, there isn't a lot of shade.
And it, the ones that are there are starting to suffer.
Yeah.
There's gonna be more of it.
Okay.
Plus they're old.
Right.
Take away any of the hazards, they get their ages against them.
Right.
Just like the rest of us. I mean, they're only the bare minus, you saw those trees that we planted, it takes a while for them to become much more true.
And that's why I would be proactive, if we, if we start and add a tree or two a, a year, you can be proactive and actually have them, instead of waiting ten years and then all decide to put one up.
No, Fred Mullins had a comment on this.
Yeah, you generally keep talking tree, is there a specific type that you wanna agree on?
Definitely not Emerald Ash.
Yeah.
We're thinking, uh, maple?
We were thinking maple to match the other ones out here, and we have, we have one ash tree on the corner here, and I, I pointed out to Mike, two of the limbs are going on that one, and I suspect that the Emerald Ash board will probably finish that tree off, I hope it doesn't, but it's a, it's a substantial sized tree.
Yes. You, you're talking maple, or sugar maple, red maple? Um, some of the ones over here are sugar maple.
I'm thinking a sugar maple like you are here, Fred, to match the other ones, but.
And as, as these trees fall, I think we should have a, like a, a policy to maybe replace them, because ten, ten, fifteen years from now, we wanna start enjoying them, and if we don't plant them soon, they'll, we'll never enjoy them.
Right.
The maples that were planted, they are a sugar maple, but they're kind of a hybrid one, that's supposed to be a little more tolerant to the environmental conditions, so I was told. I can't, for the life of me, I can't remember the technical name, but it's a, oh, yeah, but it's a form of a sugar maple. Yeah, okay, we're not the experts, so let them make a recommendation.
I know there are a lot of types of maples.
And that's, that was what I was told, um, you know, we had to take one down over here when the lightning hit. A year or two ago now, three years ago.
In the front, in the front fence, right?
So the one that was taken down there.
Any others that you removed, while you've been here because of the storm, maybe or whatever else?
Not in the common, there's just those two.
Those four.
The two we replaced, we replaced them. And then those two are the two additional ones that we had not, we didn't replace them. But the one that, we saw something, I mean, looks, it's starting to look a little aged, this tree.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it, yeah, it's.
It's actually doing good compared to the ones that are out in the woods and on the road edges.
Well, it's on borrowed time, I think.
Yeah.
Quick question, did you guys decide where the bench was gonna go? I put where, but I don't.
We're gonna, we're gonna, um, discuss it with them and then come up with a consensus.
The only thing I can suggest, just bear in mind when you're walking around out there.
Snow.
Yeah, keep it back, cause you.
See how we follow the snow.
Oh, yeah.
And it goes everywhere.
Anything, it's, it'd be nice to keep it in the shade too.
Oh. Under the new tree.
Well, I want the big canopy, okay.
Yeah, we will keep it in this.
Not that it's a big deal, but try to think in those terms. Absolutely, yeah, you don't want on the edge.
Yeah.
Yep, that great. Okay. Anything else, sir? Okay, on to you.
No, I'll go to you, because you were gonna jump on him, so.
Oh, no, I. No, he was just stealing my idea.
I was just stealing his idea, oh. Well, we were sharing ideas.
They're all good.
Yeah, I think, you know, and, I mean, I listened to, uh, you know, the town clerk, the moderators, and before we do anything though, let's give it some time to see if we get any kind of feedback, or whatever, you know, I mean, uh, again, uh, it's problematic that it's not out there that everybody, that can't be here, because they're working, thinking that because they're leaving town, and they didn't vote, that they lose an absentee ballot, cause, you know, I was told before that, yeah, if you can be there at all, and somebody sees you in town, then you should have used an absentee ballot, so I just want to keep that in mind, because a lot of people out there don't know, it's been a constant thing with telling people that we, you know, and I, you know, it's easy to say, we all know it's eight o'clock, but there are houses being built every year, and houses being reoccupied every year, and those people come from a different area, where maybe the voting times are different, and so, you know, we don't know if we're capturing or losing their ability to vote, you know, technically, when we're elected, we're here to serve the residents, so, just keep that in mind.
I did, um, I did hear some, on that subject, I did hear some new things that I hadn't talked about the night we voted. Um, you know, I, I did, I was aware it was gonna extend their hours. I didn't realize, um, you know, the before and after hours, how much it was gonna extend it, but it does extend that day, and it does, as we know, it's a long day for even us out there, so, um, I do think, you know, we'll give it a little while, Bob, and maybe bring it back to the board in, in a, in a meeting or two, give it some time to sink in, and, uh, we'll bring it back to the board and discuss it one more time, and try and make a final decision before we have another vote come up our board time.
Right. This, I don't see this, I need to rush it and reverse right away, is, uh, I think that I've heard a lot of positive comments already.
Yeah.
I've heard, um, um, and even my bitter half, she says I vote the wrong way all the time, she said she didn't like.
I, um, I didn't think serving was gonna help it as much, only because most people either start at seven or eight, and if you're gonna start at eight, most of the time, you're gonna be heading towards work, not up to vote and then trying to make it work, to work in a half hour. Not to say it couldn't be done, but if you work fairly close, that could be done.
I, it actually impacted me, I mean, I actually, if, when I was working full time, I mean, every day I would have to work, I'd have to vote, I'd lose an hour of work, I'd have to kind of patient out of my schedule.
Just a few eye doctors only worked about a half day anyway, I don't know.
And when you're going to that industry, that he's in healthcare industry, and, cause some of the people that are in this town, working at, and they can delay taking their first appointment in the morning, but once they start, they don't get done till six.
Right.
And then whatever they have to do before they leave, which means that, like, the person told me is Saturday afternoon, is they can't get back here for seven.
Right.
A lot of times, so they, they miss out on both ends.
One thing I heard, well said, and Rainey said, democracy is work, and I think, you know, if, whether you're coming to vote, whether you're doing absentee, democracy is work, you have to actually go there and show up and, and, you know, do your job by voting, it is, it is work to get that done. You know, as, as, as a reason a lot of people skip it, so. So I think let's think about a couple weeks.
I, I could, I could, I'll conclude that. All right. Anything else, sir?
Uh, I'm done.
Okay, I'm gonna go to the county administrator now.
I did a lot of work earlier.
Okay, I'm gonna go to secretary.
I, I do have a public comment.
Okay.
You're not gonna wanna hear this.
Station, station name for the, uh?
Corin McCoven. Um, it's concerning the border back there again.
I think they cleaned it up by luck.
They did clean the edge, but they still left the logs on, you know. It's, this is the.
On this, on this boundary right here, Corin?
No, there was pile here, pile here, the big tree is here.
Yeah.
There are still logs, they left it, they cleaned all this up, very good, I'm very happy, they cleaned it all up. They just, and it's real long brass there, so I don't know if you can even, I just noticed them today when I was out there, that they didn't pick the logs up.
I'm thinking that you could get Gary to do it.
Gary, he just pulled it.
Could we just, uh, send a, a little courtesy note to the cemetery trustees? Say it was brought to attention by, uh, by a.
Is it?
It's on the back.
Is it, was it?
Tell them the big.